Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, July 6, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for being here this evening. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please, Tamara.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Nightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
All right. Councilors Nightzert and Brecky will be with us remote tonight. Here to give our invocation tonight is Dr. Ron Toddingham from Empire Baptist Temple. Dr. T, thanks for being back here again. We'd ask of you, rise for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Well, I want to say all of you tonight, it's an honor to be chosen to be here tonight. This is the greatest city in the world. I've been to a lot of them. If I'd have known you guys were going to be here tonight, I would have worn my uniform. My two stars is a little bit heavy, but anyway, thank you for your service. This is the greatest city in the world, and the City Commission isn't the only ones that make it that way. It's you guys. I was served as Deputy Sheriff for four years in North Dakota, so I understand a little bit. Thank you for your service. Our Father tonight, thank you for your blessings to us. If you didn't put your hand on us and on this city, it wouldn't be what it is. So I pray you bless the City Commission tonight, bless the installing of the new Chief of Police tonight, pray you bless our officers, watch over them with all the things they have to deal with and all the pressures and things that aren't always right. Give them the grace to handle it right and to treat the citizens of this city right, whether they deserve it or not. Bless us tonight in this place, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Toddingham, for your invocation. We'll move on then to our business here. We have Item 4, our Consent Agenda. Any changes or not in motion there?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Selberg.
I'd like to pull Item 6 on the Consent Agenda, please.
All right, pull Item 6. Any other changes anyone wants to see made there? All right, look for a motion, then.
Approve Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve our Consent Agenda. Any discussion there? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll skip ahead then to Item 42, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
So moved, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jensen.
Say I'd make a motion to amend by moving Item 67 to precede Item 43, moving Item 60 to precede Item 53, and moving Items 61 through 63 to precede Item 57?
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that amendment passes eight to zero. Any other amendments to make here? All right, we'll vote on the main motion as amended, then.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Before we continue on with our agenda, just want to review public input for our agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During general public input at the end of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person. So with that, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Item 67, a motion to provide advice and consent for the appointment of Jonathan Thum as Police Chief.
All right, I'm going to pass the gavel on this one to Council Chair Sale to chair this item. Counsel, it's my honor to bring before you Lieutenant John Thum to be considered as our next Chief of Police. Before I introduce Lieutenant Thum, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the guy not in uniform in back, Chief Matt Burns, who will be retiring on July 23, my anniversary, by the way. We are losing an incredibly good man in Police Chief Matt Burns. You never know the hand you've been dealt when you take office, and man, I just inherited a great dude in Matt Burns. And we've had some difficult times the first three and a half years here, and I believe that the Chief is certainly leaving it better than he found it. And so I would love if you would give the Chief a round of applause for his service to the city. But we've been also very intentional about leadership development, succession planning across city departments, and PD has been very good with that. We were honored to have some great candidates to choose from, and we ended up with two finalists, two lieutenants, in John Thum and Nick Cook. Fellas, I want to thank you both for going through this process. It's a very public process to go through and not easy to interview and go through this in the public eye, so thank you for doing that. And ultimately, my selection to replace Chief Burns is Lieutenant Thum. And Lieutenant Thum, you can come on and come up to the mic here. Lieutenant Thum has a long law enforcement experience with us. He's got a genuine passion for public service. I'm not going to get into all his credentials because I have about a three-page Word doc in front of me here, but he's held quite a few positions with SFPD since starting in 2005. Lieutenant Thum's a Sioux Falls boy and has a lot of deep-rooted relationships in this community, which I know are going to serve you very well in this role. He's won a lot of awards during his time at SFPD, and over the last couple of years, I've really become to, I've come to rely on him as an ally. We were going through the interview process. I asked the question that I think a lot of people would ask, and that's why, you know, why do you want to do this? Why do you want this job? And for Lieutenant Thum, his answer was one of, it's a calling because it's my responsibility to step up and do this and to serve. And I would say that the last year, it's been a hard time to serve in leadership in law enforcement. And so for people who want to put their hand in the air and say, I'm willing to lead us forward, takes an incredible amount of courage, strong family support system, credible faith, and he has all the right elements that I think will be very successful in this role. So Lieutenant Thum, thanks for the thorough vetting process that we went through. Your background check was clean. We have to do a drug test yet, which we'll get that done before the 23rd. But in all seriousness, it's an honor for me to present you as the next chief candidate. And so if you want to say a few remarks, you can, and then we'll open it up for any public input.
Again, Mayor, completely honored to be appointed to this position, and esteemed councilors, appreciate you considering me for this position. And it is humbling and very, very sobering to look at this group in this room and know that we are all working together towards a common good. And I think that's something we need to remember. As we talk about different departments, different groups, we all work together for a better Sioux Falls, and I think I can see that now more than ever. Again, thanking Chief Burns. As I gave an analogy at a previous event, he handed us the keys to a pretty nice car, and it's our job to keep that car moving forward and maybe tweak it up a little bit, add some better exhaust and some other things, right? You know, but we're always striving to be better. And I think from Chief Barthel to Chief Burns, it's central to the culture of our organization to always strive to be better, to always look for improvement, to never be complacent, complacent, because complacency breeds problems. But we are always looking to be better. Somebody said, unless you are the best police department in the country, you should never stop striving for excellence. And I know that's parts of our culture as a department, and something that we'll be able to maintain through. Again, I thank this city council and the community of Sioux Falls. We have built trust, and we strive to maintain that with the police department, and we have seen that through the council time and time again, and their support of us and through the residents of Sioux Falls itself. And again, people, as you mentioned, you're taking away some of our remarks, Mayor, but as usual, they're like, why would you want to be involved in this law enforcement field right now? And why would you feel that that's where you wanted to go? And I think this question was asked a lot over the years, and first of all, you have to start with the community. We know the community supports us. We know the community backs us. In other parts of the country where they're calling to defund the police, we do the opposite. We fund new public safety training center. We look at what the police and public safety has to offer and put our investment into that because of the trust we built as a community. At a time in other parts of the country where residents were calling for cuts to the police, many people in town tried to kill us not with weapons or with violence, but with sweets and cookies and donuts, trying to give us diabetes. The reality is that we were overwhelmed with food and support throughout the past year. While, yes, on one hand, can I say I've never received more vulgar remarks or obscene gestures in the past year? Yes. However, haven't ever received more thumbs up, more cups of coffee bought for me, more words of encouragement, and more remarks in the past year? Absolutely. And that's a testament to our city and who we are, our core values as a city. And we support our law enforcement, and we support our shared goal of what we have of building an even better Sioux Falls. So again, the remark, why would you want to be involved in law enforcement? And why would you want to take that step at this point? And I think it's something that we come back to again from a community that supports us, but additionally to the people that stand behind me. I've never met a better group of people than the people I work with at the Sioux Falls Police Department. Honor, integrity, valor are key to the core of who they are and the work they do every day. And no one person is bigger than the organization, but the organization as a whole has strength, I think, that we can look at and know and take comfort in. So again, why be involved in this profession? Why push this field? Because we know the quality of work we do every day and the impact we make every day, when sometimes it gets lost in the noise. So again, I'm humbled by this appointment, appreciate the city councilors' consideration of my nomination, and know this, that we have an outstanding community. We have challenges ahead, however. There will be peaks and valleys. There will be ups and downs. But with an outstanding police force that I believe is second to none, and a community additionally that is second to none, I know these are challenges we can face moving forward. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, John.
Thank you for your words. We'll now move to public input before we get to council questions and their motion.
I have told you when the process started, we needed external to come in just to review the applicants. Okay, we still need to do that. But I am here to tell you that Officer, Lieutenant Thum has a very good heart. His wife and his kids, I told him last week that by the time he's finished, he's going to have some gray hairs, and his wife's going to have to dye his hair. Thum is a very good person. What I don't want the police department to lose, because Thum is very good at the community. We need a Chief of Police in that community, and they know as well as I know how I raise hell with them. I have a very tough area, high crime area, and I call Thum and I tell Thum, listen, I got this issue, this issue, this issue. There's challenges. There's challenges in that police department. There's challenges everywhere. I think he's the right guy to not only sit behind a desk, but he would go out into that neighborhood. He would go out into neighborhoods and talk with people, or say, if you have an issue, come into my office and let's talk about it. This is the kind of Chief of Police we want. This is the kind of Chief of Police when I walked in this crazy city in 2014, we needed a chief like him. Now, should we went external and got an external to come in here, I don't know if they would have been good or not. I don't know that. I'm still adamant about that. But this Chief of Police was good. He's a very good guy, very warm, compassionate guy, listens to the people, will pick up his phone when you call his desk, his internal desk. If you have issues with his policeman, he was there to listen to you. And not just only him, but other people, captains and Assistant Chief of Police is back here are good people, too. We're going to have hiccups and we're going to have ups and downs. And I remember a couple weeks ago, when we had all of these individuals, these kids, these juveniles problematic, that wanted to try to riot the police department and sat there in front of that police department right there. And I went over there, and I had to tell them what time of day it was that we have a good police department. This is not Minneapolis. If you want to know about crime and police brutality, go to other cities. It doesn't happen here. So Mayor and Erica Beck and everybody that's on this board, and I hope council member approves him. I know that there's going to be some, maybe some questions and some challenges coming up, but this is a good guy. We need this guy in the community like he's doing now. I just don't want, when he's mowed in by City Hall, that he loses that community value that he has. We need to keep him still communicating to that community, especially in high crime areas. So I thank him very much. I told him I love him so much. He's always will be in my heart.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. Teresa Staley. And I really appreciated what our nominee said about striving to make this a better place. I want to say that I appreciated Chief Burns' support of his staff, and I know through the years on the council, there were times when I think the police force did not feel supported. And I'm glad to see that our mayor, Paul Tenhagen, has worked with them proactively in their unions to make sure that their concerns are addressed, their non-monetary concerns are addressed, and I think our whole community wants them to feel supported. The city, the police department cannot do this alone. And what I'm going to challenge our new chief to do is to foster stronger neighborhoods. Two years ago, we had a town hall at the Kenny Anderson Center to address gun violence on the east side. And unfortunately, we're still having those incidences, where there are neighborhoods in our community that do not feel safe. We need to be proactive in this, not reactive, but proactive. And I would encourage the mayor and the council to continue to support programs that involve the whole community. The programs of Neighborhood Watch, what a great way for people to join together, to watch out for each other. The Neighborhood Associations, two years ago, Counselor Brecky and I brought back the Neighborhood Association Breakfast, where we bring people together and make it an awareness that this is in our community. And we need to have physical contact with people. Doing it just on Facebook or on the Internet isn't going to cut it. We have many people in our community that aren't connected that way, and they have a thirst to see the police force in their neighborhoods. So engaging them, having neighborhood police beats would be a fabulous thing. I think we've tried that in the past, but I encourage all of you to get out in the public, touch these people, because we're a complicated city. We're growing. We've got many issues at hand, and this is, what a great start here. I wish him the best, and again, God bless the whole police force. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Mayor and councilors, my name is Beth O'Toole, and I'm a criminal justice professor at the University of Sioux Falls and the Chair of our Social Science Area. I'm here tonight to offer my strong support for the mayor's appointment of Lieutenant John Thum to the Police Chief for the city of Sioux Falls. I imagine at this point that you've heard many wonderful things about Lieutenant Thum from various members of the community, other law enforcement professionals, and people with whom he has worked over his years at the Sioux Falls Police Department. I wanted to add my voice to that chorus with a slightly different perspective. I've known Lieutenant Thum since he was an undergraduate student at USF. This is when we see if he's nervous. About anything I might say. I've had the pleasure of observing how his career grew and developed within the Sioux Falls Police Department over the years, and we often crossed paths personally and professionally. Several years ago, after listening to him present to one of my classes about community policing in the 21st century and the challenges that were faced, I asked if he would ever consider teaching a class to undergraduates. To my delight, he said yes, and we team taught a class of 42 students who planned to be criminal justice professionals. What a treat. He has since taught the course on his own several more times, and that connection has done much to inspire our students and encourage students to apply within Sioux Falls Police Department. My observations from working with Lieutenant Thum in this capacity have been, one, he is passionate about policing. You only need to glance at his resume to see the many roles in which he has served with Sioux Falls PD. He's advanced through his career serving many varied roles in the department. Two, he's passionate about our community. He loves Sioux Falls. Ask him about his paper route, or his schooling, or his college job working at Hy-Vee, or any number of things that have happened in our city. And, sorry, I lost my spot. He relates incredibly well to the people in this city because he's lived here his entire life, and he truly understands and appreciates our community's culture. Three, he is passionate about servant leadership. He's a natural leader who wholeheartedly believes the role of law enforcement is one of service to community. When I mentioned the chorus of voices supporting him, I hope that some of you saw on social media, people saying, hey, that guy arrested me, and he was still a pretty decent guy. That's unusual. But that speaks to Lieutenant Thum's belief that all people are deserving of dignity and respect. His passion for service shines through in his everyday interactions with everybody he meets. Lieutenant Thum is stepping into a strong police department, thanks to Chief Burns. He has the talents and passion to serve our community and his department with excellence. He's ready for the challenges ahead, and I'm delighted to add my voice to the chorus of support for our next Police Chief in the city of Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll take questions from councilors before we get to a motion. Counselors' questions. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. More a comment than a question, I guess. Lieutenant Thum enjoyed our one-on-one last week, a bunch, learning about your history. You certainly have Sioux Falls roots from way back, and certainly appreciate that and your service to the city of Sioux Falls to this point. I really enjoyed your enthusiasm, your outlook, some ideas and that that you had and things you're looking into doing, and appreciate your sense of humor as well. So you come from a long bloodline of service. I remember you telling me about some of that, too. It pretty much runs in your family. I think your family served both community and country, and that's fantastic. You've obviously inherited that trait. So I've just came away very impressed with our visit and your experience, and I think that you would do a fantastic job. So I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counselors' questions. Do I hear a motion to approve?
To approve. Kylie.
Erickson.
I got a motion to approve by Kylie and seconded by Erickson. Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. Thank you for even submitting for truly what oftentimes is a thankless role for each and every one of you. You make some happy, you make some not very happy. So for you and everyone here and on the Sioux Falls Police Department, thank you for your sacrifice to you and your family. I had a nice visit with your wife and three boys for a moment, and truly thank you to her as well for her investment, because it is a family decision for you. We sat down today and had a great talk, too, and while I believe we were in great hands, and I'm extremely sad to see Burns go, it's exciting also for the next generation of leaders in our community as we move forward. So Burns, thank you for your service and investment in this community. It's been an honor to get to know you over the last several years, and I'm just really excited for just that freshness and the commitment that you have to all of your officers as well as this community. I think it speaks volumes of your integrity, and it'll be an exciting time for the next few years. And not being complacent, I think, is really, really important. And so I was grateful for really hearing your vision. So based on the vote, congratulations early, and look forward to what's in store.
Thank you.
Counselors on the phone?
Council Chair Sale.
Counselor Nightzert.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize I'm not able to be there. I'm just a little under the weather tonight. First, I wanted to thank our Police Chief, our current Police Chief Matt Burns, for his many years of service to our community. His character really doesn't get any better. He's been a strong leader through a number of critical moments in crisis and during one of the most challenging environments for law enforcement in recent memory. Because of his leadership, our next Police Chief is going to inherit a strong organization and culture. Next, I want to thank every officer in our police department. I know many of you are there tonight to support the current and our next chief. It takes a special person to put your lives on the line every day to keep us safe. It's a stressful job, and no more so than the last few years. I'm incredibly proud that I live in a community where elected leaders, both the mayor and the city council, are unequivocal in their support for the police department. I'm also proud that we're blessed to have citizens who support their police. We appreciate the job you do in Sioux Falls, and it's great to have supportive leaders and citizens alike, and I hope you can feel it. The reason we were able to look for candidates internally rather than going externally is because of the culture of excellence in our police department. That's a testament to our current and past leadership, the policies our police follow, and the character of our sworn officers. I want to thank everybody who stepped up and applied for this position, being willing to serve, particularly in this time, says a lot about you. Both of our finalists were excellent. Lieutenant John Thum is the right person at the right time to be the next leader of our police force. I had the pleasure to talk to him last week about several of the challenges facing our city and frankly, our country in the years ahead. I believe he has the right temperament and attitude. He leads by example. He is a proven leader. He builds relationships with the community. He understands that community relations and building trust is just as important as enforcing the laws. All of these attributes will only get better as he serves as our next Chief of Police. He's ready to serve, and we're lucky to have him. I'm proud to support his appointment as our next Police Chief. Thank you.
Other counselor comments?
I got one final comment. I'm going to bail you out of your first jam here, and that is, you got to introduce your family. You're not going to hear about that one, so...
So, this is my wife, Melissa, and then my three kids, Jonah, Roman, and Eli. So they're seemingly super excited about the prospect of staying for the entire meeting. So they're ready to learn all about city government, and happy you guys could teach it.
Awesome. Counselor Kylie.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to meet previously, and thank you for having the courage to set it up even more than what you have done in the past. It's amazing to me when individuals are willing to serve at even a higher capacity and in an environment that at least nationwide is maybe less than desirable to encourage men and women like you to step up and serve in the capacity that you have served this community so well over the years and I know into the future. During our discussion, I don't think that has happened, you know, our environment in Sioux Falls, it hasn't happened just by accident. It's a culture that's been created. Chief Burns and Chief Barthel before you, who Counselor Erickson and I have had the privilege to work with, you've helped create that culture. And I know that you're going to continue with that as well, too. And I think that's the advantage of a system that builds and promotes from within. And I'd like to think that maybe bringing back the bump act has had a little bit to do with the applications that took place from within the department here. So I look forward to good things. I look forward to the vision that you have for the city, for the improvements that you would like to implement for the city of Sioux Falls. I, too, believe that you're a pretty decent guy. For the record, he has not arrested me. At least, as of today, he hasn't. And how can I vote against a guy that sports the sideburns that I had when I was a high school student, and I won't tell you when?
They're absolutely timeless, despite what...
I think you just need to grow them out towards the corner of your mouth a little bit more, and they'll be just perfect then. But thank you very much. I look forward to tonight's vote.
Thanks, sir.
Other comments, councilors? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That is an eight to nothing vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, guys, but you sure don't have to if you don't want to, but we're going to move on to our next item.
Next item is Sub Item 6, Contracts and Agreements. Health Department, Agreement to Grant Funds for Operation Hope Fund for Use in Public Charitable or Humanitarian Purposes and Accommodation. Grant funding shall... purposes and accommodation. Grant funding shall focus on improving continuity of care for individuals served at the link. Vendor Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. Amount, amount, amount is $500,000.
Counselor Selberg, floor is yours on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, after a number of months of work by a lot of folks, including this council, um, I'm very excited to see the Operation Hope Program funds are being, uh, approved and released this evening. I just wanted to take the opportunity, um, to kind of review that for all who are out there watching tonight. In review, this is a program to offer assistance to anyone seeking assistance through the link, on anything from anxiety and depression to chemical dependency in its various forms. The goal is to offer hope to those who, for whatever reason, be it financial, maybe it's pride or it's stigma, they have put off seeking help. So, I will be beating the drum pretty hard and promoting this program as best I can in the upcoming weeks. I hope the council will join me in doing the same, and I'm sure my colleagues, you know, and everybody here, we all know people with these issues, and all people that need this service. So, uh, stay tuned. I hope all of you will help spread the word, and just wanted to say a thank you again to the link, the community foundation, the administration, the council, and for everybody who got together and worked on this. Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. Anyone from the public want to speak on this bold item here? All right, just look for a motion to approve it, then.
Move to approve.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, counsel? Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yeah, and I don't know, Counselor Selberg, if you can answer this, but what's the benefit of giving the money to the community foundation and then to the link rather than just giving it to the link directly? What, what are we gaining in that process?
I think there are a lot of reasons, technical reasons through which I should have probably had, um, Mr. Pritchett here tonight to explain those.
Here?
Is he here? Well, there he is, to save the day. Come on up.
Yes. Um, so the decision was made to have the funds run through the community foundation. Uh, firstly, because, um, it assists the city to the extent of it's an operating fund, so we would have to reappropriate it every year and wouldn't know exactly how much would be expended. So, that was the first transition, is it can be utilized, invested, uh, and utilized as needed over the next several years, plus also leverage additional private, uh, uh, donations, if possible, uh, that, that I know Counselor Selberg will be working, uh, to help work with. Um, and secondly, uh, the link doesn't currently, and didn't currently, I believe, also doesn't currently have their own bank accounts. They, uh, the community foundation had stepped up and during this period of transition, served as the financial agent, uh, on behalf of them.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other discussion on this one, counsel? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight oh. We'll move on to our next item.
Item forty-three is new 2021 retail wine and cider license and new 2021/22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for Yummy House Restaurant LLC, 1602 South Sycamore Avenue with conditional use permit, CU 14339 2021, being approved on June 2nd, 2021. Item forty-four is a new 2021 retail wine and cider license and new 2021/22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for Samurai Tastius Incorporated, 3217 South Sartoma Avenue, CUP not required. Item forty-five is a transfer of 2021 package liquor license from Melanie Liquors Incorporated, Skyway Liquor, 1101 North Minnesota Avenue to Clouds Enterprises, Skyway Liquor, 1101 North Minnesota Avenue. Item forty-six is transfer of 2021 retail liquor license from Ballard Building Restaurant Company, Parkers, 210 South Main Avenue to Ballard Building Restaurant Company, Parkers, 208 and 210 South Main Avenue, pending final inspections per building services. Item forty-seven is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Stockyards A Experience 301 East Falls Park Drive for a Minnesota Farm Bureau LEAP Conference on July 16th, 2021. Item forty-eight is a special one-day liquor and special one-day off-sale wine license for Catholic Community Foundation for Eastern South Dakota to be operated at Avera IT, 212 East 11th Street for a Bishop Dudley Hospitality House fundraiser on August 14th, 2021.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on items forty-three through forty-eight.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on any of those items? All right, counsel, do you have any questions for Jamie on those?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to approve forty-three to forty-eight. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item forty-nine, please.
Item forty-nine is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located northeast of East Bull Pine Trail and South Six Mile Road, from the CN Conservation and RA3 Apartment Residential High Density Districts to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, number 14365 2021. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, the planning commission recommends approval seven to zero. Private applicants Assam F. and K. Family LLC, Sam Assam.
Hey, Albert. Evening. I'm Albert Schmidt, say Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services, here to bring these, these to you tonight. Uh, so this location is over here, uh, north of East 26th Street and east of South Six Mile Road. Their approximate size is 1.56 acres. And again, the reason for coming forward is the placement of the propulines between each townhome. Uh, they needed to sell those, and so these get rezoned to the properties district to do that. So, I'll take any questions you may have.
Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counsel, do you have any questions for Alberton on this?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Selberg.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Selberg to approve item forty-nine. Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is item fifty, a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1201 North Marion Road, from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, number 14368 2021. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, the planning commission recommends approval seven to zero. Private applicants Aspen Heights LLC, Clint Ackerman.
This one is located, uh, north of West Madison Street and west of North Marion Road, and this location is approximately 5.5 acres in size. And as you can see, they're rezoning to the RD2, which matches the stuff right to the west, building similar style going on there, and they construct the town, townhomes on the acres. Take any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? All right, counsel, any questions on this item? I'd look for a motion to approve.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is fifty-one, is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located southwest of East 26th Street and South Veterans Parkway, from the CN Conservation RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, O Office LW Live Work RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, and C3 Commercial, community districts to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts, number 14340 2021. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, planning commission recommends approval seven to zero. Private applicants GND Har Construction LLC, Gary Har.
And this location is located southwest of the corner of East 26th Street and South Veterans Parkway, and it's approximately 38.1 acres in size for the area that's being requested. And so, you can see again here, the existing on the left, proposed the right. The rationale, what's going on here, is we're updating it based on the initial rezoning, based on wetlands delineations that happened out there, and starting the work through the redevelopment side of it. So, I can take any questions you have.
Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? All right, counselors, you have any questions for Albert here? Move approval?
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Selberg and seconded by Counselor Sale to approve this item. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is fifty-two, a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 8300 and 8400 West 48th Street, from the AG Agricultural District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 14369 2021. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, the planning commission recommends approval seven to zero. Private applicants Sundance Group Incorporated, Jeff Shetkowsky.
Perfect. This location is over off of the west side of town, um, just north of West 48th Street and east of about one lot of east, or south Ellis Road, excuse me. Uh, it's 4.45 acres in size, currently agriculture, and the purpose here is to subdivide this into a residential subdivision, about sixteen twin home lots. I can take any questions you may have on that.
Thank you, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, any questions on this item here? Look for a motion.
Move approval, Sale.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Kylie to approve this. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is moved by amendment, item sixty, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of equestrian estates addition. The planning commission recommends approval seven to zero. Private applicants Willitsen Lund Engineering Corp., Ericson Willitsen.
All right, this is for the same location. This is the preliminary subdivision plan. So, same acres of 4.45 acres for sixteen lots. Staff has done a review on it, and preliminary is acceptable for us, and we're looking for approval so we can move forward to DEP stages and really get this design underway.
All right, thank you, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, any questions for Albert on this? For a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve item sixty. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is moved by amendment, item sixty, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of equestrian estates addition. The planning commission recommends approval seven to zero. Private applicants Willitsen Lund Engineering Corp., Ericson Willitsen.
All right, this is for the same location. This is the preliminary subdivision plan. So, same acres of 4.45 acres for sixteen lots. Staff has done a review on it, and preliminary is acceptable for us, and we're looking for approval so we can move forward to DEP stages and really get this design underway.
All right, thank you, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, any questions for Albert on this? For a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve item fifty-three. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jensen, go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you for bringing this and your thought process and your work behind the scenes to make this happen, and work with the groups that it actually impacts. That's how stuff like this should be accomplished, and, uh, I appreciate your work, Butch, uh, with, with those groups and here on the next couple of, uh, of slides. We talked about this at length, and I, I saw a group out there saying that this is going to increase all fees, and that's just not the case, uh, here in this. So, I'm, I'm excited for this thought process. I'm excited for the work that you've done on this, and, uh, and thank you for that. So, thanks.
All right, thank you, counselor. Any other discussion on this one, counsel? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item fifty-four is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending the fees section of chapter 150, building, subchapter plumbing. So, answer is the mayor.
This is the same one, uh, just trying to make it more efficient. So, instead of the plumbing inspectors counting each outlet into a house, they can do it on the cost basis of the house.
All right, thanks, Butch. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, you got any questions for Butch here?
Move to approve.
Second, Ericson.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Ericson to approve fifty-four. Any discussion, counsel? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is fifty-five, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending the fees section of chapter 150, building, subchapter electricity.
This is number three of three. Instead of counting circuit breakers, we'll go on with the cost of the project.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, questions here? I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve fifty-five. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Ericson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is fifty-six, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter 156 flood plane management, sponsors the mayor.
Hey, Albert. Proud to be back up here for you guys on our second reading for our flood plane ordinance, uh, journey that we're here at. So, just wanted to touch base, I'll go fairly quickly since we've talked about this before, but just in case anybody's tuning in for the first time, this is the outreach we've done. Uh, it's been a long, ten-month public reach, outreach, uh, process for us, but we think, we feel like we've really came to some good conclusions, worked well with a lot of people, and, um, I think we have a good product in the end. So, the reason why we're updating this is we think we need some more forward-looking restrictions and protections for properties as we're developing so quickly. And so, when And so when we look at these items, the main thing that we're looking at here is changing things like where we're flooding or what we're going to regulate to. So we're looking at using the newest data, so this map's a great example for those who aren't familiar. The one on your left being the current maps, the one on the right being the one that we're going to be going to. So you can see that follows much better the actual area and the lay of the land for where the water sits, where it will flood, and those kind of things. So we think it's a good process to move forward with and help protect the property owners that will future be there as far as we're building new houses and those kind of things going on there. So when we talk about this, we're also looking at trying to contain or keep the capacity for floodplain. So this is a great example here. Pictures on the right show you why it's important that water needs someplace to go during an event. Right now, we're not so worried about that, but that will change. And so you can see just how much water you can hold in these areas, and trying to maintain that capacity is a very forward-thinking aspect of this that we've been told by other areas, FEMA and different groups, that not a lot of communities are doing. So this is us trying to be very forward-thinking, protecting us and the future citizens. And then again, we're trying to, again, look and trying to get properties brought into compliance as best as possible, well yet without being overhanded. And so we're trying to just make some updates here with our substantial definitions for improvements and damage. And so we're making those changes from fifty to forty-five and then over a three-year period instead. And then in addition, we're trying to, for the future investments of the city and our private infrastructure, help them make good decisions. Try to get them out of the flooding areas, even outside the next level flooding areas, so that if it does flood, we don't need to get in there and save their lives or help get them out of a dangerous situation. So that's really the catalyst for all that side of stuff. And again, this is the list of the main things we're proposing, but I just went through the high points for you there. Tonight is the last step in the public hearing process that we're proposing, and if adopted tonight, we would be looking for enforcement at the end of the month. I'll take any questions you have, but that's my short suite.
All right, thank you, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, any questions for Albert on this? Look for a motion, please.
Move to approve?
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Counselor Kylie. Discussion, Counsel, on this one. All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move to item sixty-one, moved by amendment.
Item sixty-one is a resolution dissolving tax incremental district number twenty-two. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Dustin.
Evening, Counsel. Mayor Dustin Powers with Planning and Development Services. The next four items on your agenda are related to the redevelopment of the former Sioux Steel site in downtown. C.R. Lloyd Associates has requested a reset of the tax increment district number twenty-two timeline, which was approved by city council in February of two thousand and twenty. To be able to reset the timeline, we do need to dissolve existing TIF district number twenty-two and create a new district. So the four items that you'll see tonight are all related to that, and I do intend to present them all at once as they all are tied together here. Just to remind everyone about the project, what is expected to be developed is a hotel and convention center, which will include two hundred and sixteen rooms, hotel rooms, and roughly sixty thousand square feet of convention space. It'll also include a nine-story, one hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot office tower, which will also include ground floor retail. It will include a parking structure that will house over nine hundred parking stalls, as well as an apartment building wrapping the parking structure that entailed six levels, ninety apartments, twenty-five condos, and roughly thirty thousand square feet of ground floor retail. The total project cost for the entire development is over two hundred million dollars. So again, the four items for consideration are dissolving of TIF twenty-two. That is item sixty-one on your agenda tonight, and that resolution would dissolve the district, which would allow us to create the new district for TIF district number twenty-four. Since the anticipated development did not happen, there was no increment, tax increment financing originated for the project or under the TIF twenty-two, and no amount of money was reimbursed through TIF twenty-two. The other three items are related to the creation of the new district, which would be the district boundary, the project plan, and the development agreement. When we look at all of those items, what you'll see is that all of these items are pretty much substantially similar to the original items that were approved under tax increment district twenty-two. So just, again, recreating a new district. So with item sixty-two, we are looking at the TIF twenty-four district boundary. The proposed boundary is tract one of Lot A of the Sioux Steel addition, which totals approximately seven point five acres. The parcel currently generates roughly fifty-seven thousand dollars in property taxes. The TIF request is for twenty-one million, five hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. That will go to support the construction of the nine hundred-plus stall parking ramp that will support the density of the proposed development, and those details will be outlined in the development agreement. Following the improvements, we do anticipate that over one point six million dollars will be added to the property taxes collected, and those will be, that increment will be used to reimburse for the construction of the parking ramp improvements that, again, are listed in the development agreement. For the city council to create a tax increment district, they must present findings that either twenty-five percent of the site is blighted or at least fifty percent of the site will contribute and stimulate and develop the general economic welfare and prosperity of the state. Based on the improvements that are being proposed, that have been detailed briefly here, as well as at previous meetings, there is going to be significant enhancement of the property valuations for all of the property associated with the district, therefore meeting the requirements for creating a district. Item number sixty-three on your agenda tonight is the project plan. South Dakota codified law requires us to address a number of items related to the project within the project plan. Those include what the improvements of the district will be, the economic feasibility of the district, the estimated project cost, fiscal impact to the taxing entities before and after the TIF has come to fruition, as well as the methods of financing. We're also required to address the existing uses, proposed improvements, any zoning or code changes associated with the project. So what you'll see is the project plan is attached as part of the resolution with item sixty-three. We believe that all of those items are required by South Dakota codified law have been addressed. Finally, the last item is item fifty-seven, which details the TIF request through the development agreement. What you'll see is this is a developer-funded TIF. The reimbursement will be limited to twenty-one million, five hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollars plus financing cost at five percent, with the total amount of the financing cost being capped. The developer would require to complete the parking structure and submit actual costs to certify for reimbursement. And then really the reason for the TIF supporting the public parking or the parking structure is that the parking will be available to the public. That is consistent with how we operate our public parking system. So during the day, they will be leasing spaces to the residential office and commercial tenants, as well as the hotel guests that are utilizing the space. But all non-leased spaces will be available to the public on an hourly rate as we currently have during the day, as well as free nights and weekends. So again, the developer will be responsible for the financing and the repayment of the parking structure, as well as the entire project. So with that, I'll open up for any questions. Jake Kozni with Lloyd Companies is also here if there's any questions about the project.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Anyone from the public here to speak on item sixty-one? All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Joe Bachelor with downtown Sioux Falls. We, the DTSF organization, has evaluated TIFs, and TIFs are one of the tools that we have in our economic toolbox, and we don't have a whole lot others beside this. And so we are in full support of using TIF for this use. Creates a parking structure that'll support a development that'll greatly enhance the vibrancy, the livability, the attractiveness of downtown. And this can really be a workforce development tool for attracting more talented workforce to Sioux Falls. It also creates the right kind of parking for downtown. When we can create structured parking, we eliminate the need to pave nine acres of downtown. I just did the rough math, and my numbers might be a little bit fuzzy, but can you imagine nine acres of surface parking lots in downtown? This creates the highest and best use for this particular land, and so I just wanted to pass on to the counsel, mayor, that we are in full support of this TIF. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, you got any questions for Dustin on item sixty-one? All right, look for a motion, please.
Move to approve?
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Counselor Erickson. Any discussion on that then, Counsel? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Next item, moved by amendment, item sixty-two. A resolution creating tax incremental district number twenty-four, city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant C.R. Lloyd Associates Incorporated, Jake Kozni.
Again, Dustin with the city planning office. Again, this would create the new TIF twenty-four district for the Steel District.
All right, thank you, Dustin. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselors, any questions on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that motion?
That was seconded by Kylie. Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Kylie on that. Any discussion on that? Thank you for the correction. All right, let's take a vote then.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item sixty-three moved by amendment.
Item sixty-three is a resolution approving the project plan for tax incremental district number twenty-four, city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant C.R. Lloyd Associates Incorporated, Jake Kozni.
Nothing more to add unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Dustin. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? All right, councilors, any questions?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second.
Second, Recky.
Whoofda. That was a lot of seconds. I think it was Counselor Jensen was second on that. Any discussion there?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Jensen.
You know, I was going through the presentation, and I thought it was great. The one interesting thing that came to me was that, right now, it has fifty-seven thousand dollars in annual taxes on this land. It will, at the end of this project, be around one point six million dollars. If we kept it the way it is today, that fifty, it would take twenty-seven years to get to that one point six million dollars, and that will be an annual tax revenue going to our schools, going to our municipality, and going to our county. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, as you see on the screen here in front of you, and I'm looking forward to how this is going to actually impact far greater people than the people that will get to enjoy this. It'll improve a lot. So I'm just really excited for this, and I think there's a lot of energy in this city, and we're going to keep this thing going, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion to approve this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item fifty-seven, please.
Item fifty-seven is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, establishing the tax increment revenues to be collected and authorizing the payment of tax increment revenues to C.R. Lloyd Associates Incorporated in accordance with the development agreement for tax incremental district number twenty-four, city of Sioux Falls. Private applicant C.R. Lloyd Associates Incorporated.
Dustin, again, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Anyone from the public like to speak on this? All right, look for a motion on this.
Move to approve?
Second.
Move to approve, Recky.
Motion, motion by Kylie. We got a bit of delay, Counselor Recky, so you're getting beat to the punch on this one. Counselor Kylie with the motion, Counselor Erickson with the second on that. Any discussion here? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item fifty-eight, please.
Item fifty-eight is a first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain real property of the city surplus and authorizing exchange of city land with a private land order. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Andy.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Andy Berg, Public Works Engineering. Tonight, this is first reading on the ordinance for a land swap between city of Sioux Falls and Wind Group LLC for the Forty-Ninth Street extension, the segment from Western Avenue to West Avenue.
All right, thanks.
Would be open to any questions you may have. It is basically a straight land swap. There's no cash involved with the exchange.
All right, thanks, Andy. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselors, you got any questions for Andy here?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Counselor Sale, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July thirteenth. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Move on to item fifty-nine, please.
Item fifty-nine is a first reading. An ordinance approving the annual rate increase pursuant to the franchise agreement for ground ambulance service for the city of Sioux Falls with Paramedics Logistics, South Dakota LLC. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Alicia.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Alicia Colera, Assistant Director of Public Health. So each year around this time, we bring forward the annual ambulance performance report, as well as the proposed rate increase. The agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Patient Care EMS requires response time performance, clinical performance, system improvements, workforce stability, pricing compliance, and reporting compliance. Last week, you received the full report for contract performance, and we also reviewed that this afternoon. And through that annual report, you learned that PC EMS has met all contract requirements for the preceding year. The city's agreement with PC EMS also stipulates that ambulance service, as their primary means of compensation, will be through fee-for-service reimbursement of patient charges. Each year, those charges are adjusted by either three percent or the increase in the consumer pricing index for the preceding year, whichever is greater. All rates and charges for services shall be approved by REMS and the city council. The consumer pricing index for the year ending May twenty twenty-one was five percent. Therefore, PC EMS is requesting a rate increase for your consideration of five percent. Ambulance service oversight and quality assurance validates that PC EMS has met their contract requirements. On June twenty-third, the REMS Board also reviewed the annual ambulance report, as well as the requested rate increase of five percent, and approved both of those items. So this item is now presented for your consideration and approval. Myself and Damian Gonzalez are here for any need to follow up.
All right, thanks, Alicia. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, you have any questions for Alicia or for Damian?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor Starr.
Thank you. Assistant Director, I'm trying to find which CPI you're using, because I'm not finding five percent. Medical is still less than three.
Sure.
Is it urban?
I have the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index published May twenty twenty-one. It's the CPIU, so the Consumer Price Index for Urban Consumers.
One second.
Other questions for Alicia while we're waiting here?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I just have a comment. I just want to say thanks for sending this early. It gave us time to look at everything in advance. You know, oftentimes, we're all quick to say, thanks for sending it the day of, and we had this in plenty of time, and so thank you for sending it. It gave everyone ample time to ask questions in advance and really look at all the information to make the decision that we need to make. So while there may not appear to be a lot of questions here as we sit, oftentimes, we email them, we get clarification, and kind of walk through that process. So we're not just sitting like a bunch of bums on the log here. We've worked through the process to get where we get and answer those questions. So thanks for sending it in advance, and it makes it easier for us to be able to digest and really process that decision that we make, so thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd look for a motion. It's to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July thirteenth for this item.
So move, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie on that. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Before we move on, I just want to thank Alicia and Sandy. Dr. Chima just started last week, so he's on board. Alicia and Sandy have done a great job in the interim, kind of running things, and I really appreciate all your work, so thank you for that. So we'll move on to item sixty-four then, please.
Item sixty-four is a resolution declaring it necessary to levy and levying a frontage assessments against the lots, tracts, and parcels of land fronting and abutting upon twenty-four Twenty-Four, Twenty-First Street, from Phillips Avenue to Seventh Avenue in the city of Sioux Falls for the purpose of maintaining planting and otherwise improving and caring for the center parkways and boulevard thereon. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Kelby.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. This is the annual assessment for this area of Twenty-First Street, from Phillips Avenue to Seventh Avenue. There are fifty-three properties that will be assessed eighty-five cents per front foot and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, Kelby. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Councillor, you got any questions for Kelby on this one?
Move to approve.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve sixty-four. Any discussion here? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Move to item sixty-five.
Item sixty-five is a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen board sponsors. The mayor, the boards are: For Charter Revision Commission, Kathryn DeKina; For Disability Awareness and Accessibility Review Board is Dolores Lipp, Kathleen Zepeda; For Mechanical Board of Appeals and Examiners, Travis Ball, Martin Christensen; For Parks and Recreation Board, Teresa Colwells; For Sioux Falls Regional Emergency Medical Services Authority, REMZA, Michelle Urpenbach.
All right, thanks to mayor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? All right, let's look for a motion, please.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Is there discussion in the council on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item sixty-six, notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
All right, councillors, before we move to public input, any new business for us tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to general public input. Just a reminder, input will last no more than three minutes per person, so, anyone for public input tonight? Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, hello everybody. My name's Kathryn Riffel. I work with the people downtown. We have three major situations that need to be addressed. One is that I had mentioned before about a hundred and eighty-five million dollars being missing with the homeless coalition and nothing has been done to even try and find that money. Also, over four hundred thousand dollars was given to the homeless coalition and they were by the tribal councils. And so, we want to know where that money is. We want to know what it went for. And that's the two things I'm concerned about. And one major thing is, we have too much sex trafficking going on in the city and therefore, I'm stepping up and I'm gonna do what I gotta do. I have people coming to me for safe place to stay because they're being intimidated, they're being threatened, et cetera, et cetera. Guess you can just use your imagination on the rest of that. So, I'm gonna be here until something gets done and I'm good at what I do and I'm gonna stand up and stand proud of my accomplishments back east, so I know what I'm doing out here. The one picture that I showed you all about that girl that had been beat real bad, well that was my daughter. My daughter also was pulled up into that sex trafficking. I got a phone call one day that they had stole, her and a young man had stole somebody's phone and they called me to come get them out of there. They were petrified. So, I'm here to stay and I'm gonna work on sex trafficking. I do want to know where that money went because I got a lot of people on the streets that they need a place to stay. And with the new buildings going up, the rent is not being lowered enough for them. So we gotta find out what's going on without sending them all the way on the west side, which as you know, is Tornado Alley. So, that's my concerns. I hope you all will work with me when I do finally get this out to the public, I guess you'd say, because I've already been working on it on my own. So, that's about what I got to say. People need protection and I did talk with the new chief of police and he has agreed to see me so that I can give him information, et cetera, and things to help get this sex trafficking stopped. Our city is building so quickly and really well. I don't want that in our city. Oh, my purse is over there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
C.R. Wilson, I want to piggyback on the sex trafficking. So, I'm working with legislation, next legislation, because people is getting charged with pimping and then they're getting probation, sentencing to probation, or presumption probation needs to be put out of the law, so they're working on putting that out the law. I get it, three-year-old, eight-year-old, sexual assault in my neighborhood, I was there, assault, alleyways, I get it, it's a high crime area. Those people are being brought to justice. There's a lot of prostitutes that are not... I've talked to Daniel with the state attorney's office, it's not credible in the courts, it's not credible with the police department, unfortunately, does that give it the right for people to sexual assault them? No, so we're trying to bury that stuff here. We do have a lot of sexual assault people coming to the police and opening up cases and then they're backing down from the case, but it's still gonna be open for twenty-four, twenty-five years. So there's active cases, so they're going to the police, they're saying who their assailants are, blah, 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 but then when it comes to the court system, they're not ready for that yet. So, trust me, I know about sex trafficking that's happening in my neighborhood. We have some ICE coming in from California, North Carolina, sex trafficking and picking them up in the eighteen-lers. I get it. It's very hard when we don't have a victim coming forward or a victim comes forward and then wants to drop the case. And then the prosecutors can't do nothing with the case. There's a lot of drugs involved where they want to dope up these prostitutes and then the prostitutes are willing to do anything for that high and then they go to the police once when they get off that high and then they want to turn their pimping, but yet they want to come back and get that second and third and fourth high on there. Do I want to see more sex trafficking out there to try to nab? More sex trafficking, yes, but you have to understand, we only have five or six undercovers in street crimes unit and I think we need a little bit more, just like those K-9 officers. We need more of those K-9 officers that they're staying zero. We need more K-9 officers because some are going into retirement. Five or six of these undercovers do multiple things, sex trafficking, gangs, alcohol stings, tobacco stings. They're doing like ten, fifteen things, so can you imagine six people or five people throughout this whole thing, just like when we have Kyle Johnson and Brady Lewin for community resource? We have two of them, well, three because of mental health, but we have three, we need more. Three of them trying to do this whole city is unreal. So, stopping issue is a challenge. I'm sure that the mayor and council and chief doom is going to try to get as much as we can on that police department force. So I just wanted to piggyback on what she had said on human trafficking.
All right, thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I, my name is Ann Wilson and I love summer in Sioux Falls. I want to congratulate our city leaders in providing us with wonderful recreational facilities, parks and recs. I spent the midday at Drake Springs. I love Sioux Falls in the summertime. However, I don't like the mosquitoes and I also want to thank the city for its mosquito eradication program. None of us want to be faced with West Nile and I thank you for the careful efforts to eliminate mosquitoes. Nonetheless, I had somewhat of a concerning experience several weeks ago. I was out walking. Fortunately, this evening, I was not with my dog, as I usually am, but was on the sidewalk as the mosquito spray truck approached. I noticed that he looked at me and tried to turn off his spray. This was sometime between eight and nine o'clock, between Thirty-Third and Twenty-Sixth Street on Fifth Avenue. I dashed off to run between two houses as the spray was approaching me. Nonetheless, the mist brought the spray right over me. I request that something be done to minimize the amount of spraying during the hours where people are likely to be out and to wait until dusk when at least it's dark. So I thank you for your efforts in keeping us healthy, but I appreciate efforts that also keep the remedy also healthy for us all. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Ann.
I want to start out today and I want to say thank you to councillor Rick Kylie and former councillor Rex Ralphing for their leadership in creating the South Dakota Veterans Cemetery north of town. When that was coming up, it had complete support from my colleagues on the council and this is a fabulous asset for our community. Last Friday, I had the pleasure of visiting the facility to commemorate Kermit Stagers, our former, he was a state senator and a beloved city councillor because he was very responsive to the citizens. And the family had a lovely service there at the communal committal shelter and Kermit also had full military honors out there. So it's just fabulous. I would encourage people to visit that. It's north on I-229 and Bravo. Thank you, councillor Kylie. I know that you guys spent a lot of effort trying to get that going. My second topic I want to talk about is the mosquito spraying. I value this service in our town and of course, I understand West Nile is a problem and I value that we do this for our citizens as a taxpayer service. I spoke to the supervisor, Denise Patton, last week and she told me that the protocol is that they spray from dusk to dawn and that was always my understanding. Part of it is for protection of the citizens, but also because of the beneficial insects that are still flying around. She said that they spray the bike trail after ten o'clock to avoid spraying people on the bike trail and also, they spray the downtown area later at night because there are people dining and walking downtown. What I want to ask for is that we have the same consideration for our residential neighborhoods. I was outside on June twenty-first and on June twenty-eighth and the sprayer truck came by at eight eleven on our neighborhood. Now, that's the longest day of the year, June twenty-first. It was a beautiful day. There were children out, people had their windows open and the sprayer came through. I've been told by people that there's budgetary concerns, that we don't have enough resources to start spraying at dusk, so we're having to start earlier. So I'm challenging you, Mayor Tanhagen, if you'd look at me, I'd appreciate it. I'm challenging you and the council to put more money into the budget so we can hire more staff and if we need to buy some extra sprayer trucks, we can do that, so that we can start spraying closer to the dusk time than at, like, I believe tonight, they were starting at seven o'clock. Because I know that the people I'm talking with really don't want to be sprayed, they don't want their children sprayed. There's reports of a woman at a playground that got sprayed with her kids, so I'd appreciate if we address this. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public input tonight? Come on up.
I'm David Zalkitis and I'm here to talk tonight about the use of dogs during arrests. Now, the basic idea is that if you have a stressful arrest situation, you might send in a dog with a police officer to make sure that things go well for the officer. This also increases the likelihood of arrest. But police dogs are descendant of wolves and wolves are carnivores, so you really better be careful with these creatures because sometimes they get out of control. Some potential problems are attacking the wrong person, attacking the wrong body parts, and sometimes just getting the dog off causes a whole lot of damage. Making life a little more difficult for the person on the end of the bite is that there's really no accountability for government misuse of police dogs. It's hard to sue, for example, and certain laws, like the city law over there, specifically preclude holding police accountable for misusing their dogs. While I was checking into laws, I found some very interesting South Dakota laws that looked like they came out of the Wild West and are still on the books. Like you can shoot people who are fleeing from justice if they're felons and some other things, but you really got to read them. It's kind of hard to believe that they're still there. And I looked into federal law. If you're being chewed on by a police dog, it's illegal to defend yourself from that chew. There's the law. I just think that's a little excessive. I think we surely should understand just how dangerous some police dogs are and there's a quote that says that they can be just about as bad as a pistol shot. The modern standards for violence, it's not okay anymore to shoot people escaping, escaping arrest it is, but it's okay to shoot people who are escaping prison. So you better, there's that Supreme Court ruling in nineteen eighty-five saying that